I do want to introduce, he might be coming forward with the mics now, but I really want to thank Ala Musa, the owner of Casablanca. I think they've done, they've been very generous in opening up an entire half of their restaurant for us to use for a town hall. We wanted this town hall to be as close as possible to the park as we could get, and I think Casablanca is just a block away. Can everyone hear me? Okay, so this is better, that's Ala Musa, the owner of Casablanca. And I know my office and the police and Department of Public Works already had a meeting with about 50 residents of the River House directly next to the park. How many of you were at that meeting from two weeks ago? Okay, so a fair number of you were there. We obviously have a great turnout now. My chief of staff, Amanda, do you have the sign-in sheets going around?
They're going around.
Yeah, you don't have to sign in, but it's useful. It's good for us to know who is here, and then also if there's a follow-up, especially if there's emails, we can send out email lists summarizing some of the follow-up from the meeting. So if you'd like to sign in, that would be helpful for us and helpful for you, I think, so we can keep getting the word out. Just a little bit of background, I'll be brief because I know a lot of you are here and probably want to express your thoughts, concerns, or ask questions to us about how we're going to proceed going forward.
Can you hear me all?
Can you hear me now? I'll just give a little bit, I'll talk closer to the mic. I'll give a little bit of history of the park, starting in, well, finishing in 2006, after planning started in the late 90s. The Marsupio Bridge was built along with the Media Garden and a new bus stop where Hope meets Brady. Mayor obviously remembers that better than me because he was mayor as of 2004, I didn't become alderman until 2008. But I think a very successful, award-winning redesign of what had been a totally forgotten and abandoned except by things you wouldn't, that you wouldn't, that you'd want to abandon, abandoned except for bad stuff down under the bridge, like you normally think of what happens under a bridge. I think the city did it well before my time, so I'm not taking any credit. Did a great job of investing, and the community did a great job of investing in creating this wonderful public space. Since then, for the last several years, we've had swings up, which was not a city idea, it was a community idea. And I think the swings have made the park even more popular. We've had a lot of positive feedback about the park. I've also gotten quite a bit of negative feedback, especially in the last couple of years, about mostly after 10:00 p.m. activity. Sometimes noise nuisance activities, sometimes worse, and obviously we all know, I think we all know what happened, what happened weeks ago. We had a very tragic double homicide, a 17-year-old and a 21-year-old, both dead after a gunfight, I think on the bridge, not in the park but on the bridge. The police are here, they can go into more details about that. That certainly was an event that no one wants to see repeated anywhere in the city. Certainly, we want to make sure that that kind of thing doesn't happen at Swing Park. One way to make sure that doesn't happen is to make sure that people aren't in the park at all after 10:00, which has always been a rule. Signs up there that says "Don't be there after 10:00." I recognize that that rule is routinely broken. I've gotten the calls, the police department has gotten the calls. It's been a source of intense police activity. However, even while it was a source of intense police activity, we still had this tragic event two and a half weeks ago. Since then, Captain, you want to know more detail about some of the strategies they've undertaken. But there have been no calls for service, no major incidents in and of parks since then. I want to hear from you how you think it's been, or certainly not saying that that means we've solved the issue, because we realize in the aftermath of a tragedy, sometimes that can be a reaction one way and then can react back to normal later. So we're very cognizant of that, we're taking this very seriously. We have some ideas that we'll get into, cameras, and lighting, police patrols, and we want to hear more ideas from you about what we can do. Ala, he doubles not just as the owner of this particular restaurant, but he's the president of the Brady Street Business Improvement District. They actually have a maintenance contract for the bridge and parts of the park. They're part of the conversation as our senior property owners about how and who, what kinds of physical investments, and also ongoing investments like litter pickup, we can make. Because if people see an area that has litter in it, especially under the bridge, they're going to think that's an abandoned area where they can hang out, and then bad things can, other bad things besides litter can start to happen. So picking up the litter, keeping it well lit, having cameras, having signs that say you're on camera, and having police presence if you ignore those signs, are some of the ways we are, and we're going to try to continue making sure that the park is safe all hours of the day, that the park is not being used at all at night after 10:00 p.m. I'll let the mayor say anything as well.
Good evening, I just want to thank everyone for being here. Thank you very much for hosting us tonight. I'm here to listen as much as anything to find out what your concerns are. To echo a little bit of what Nick was saying, right now I'm coming from an event for a new hotel opening that's in the old Katz Brewery, Hyatt Place, that's just opening right now. And that's an example, as is this bridge, the Marsupio Bridge, of the city reinvesting in itself. That was an abandoned area, this obviously was a desolate area that we brought back to life. Nick did a very good job, I think, of talking about the challenges that we have had recently. I could go more into depth, this evening goes on about that incident, or actually that 24-hour period, which was a very jolting 24-hour period in the city, because there were actually four homicides in 24 hours. And every one of those homicides involved two different parties, both of whom had guns. In other words, this incident, you had a couple crossing the bridge, you had a group of young people crossing the other way, and unfortunately, in each group, someone had a gun, and somebody ended up dead. That happened two other times in exactly the same type scenario, where both parties had guns. I'll tell you what the challenge is when we're dealing with guns in the city, illegal guns in particular. But we know, we've got our police department here, I want to have them talk a little bit about, as Nick said, their strategies, but this is to learn from you as well, to get your input as to what we should do about the park, what we should do about public safety in general, because that's the most basic thing we have in the city. We have to be safe, we have to feel safe. I have a 24-year-old daughter who just moved about five blocks from here, so I feel very strongly as mayor, but also as a dad, I want to make sure that she's safe as well. But I want everybody to be safe, not just my kids, I want everybody in the city to be safe. And so we have to be able to communicate with each other, listen to each other, understand each other, and see what steps we can take together, whether it's businesses or individuals, the police department, the city, to make sure that we are making this as safe a city as we all want it to be. So with that, I'll turn it back to you, Mr. Row.
Okay, and I think here to take questions are Karen Decker from Department of Public Works, and Ala Musa, we've already mentioned. But I do think Captain Rowe and Tom Klein may want to say a few introductions.
Good evening, I am Captain Diana Rowe, I'm the captain of the first district, which includes obviously the Swing Park. I just want to give you a little bit of a background, what we've been doing this year so far with regards to the Swing Park, what we did at the beginning of the summer, what we did as a result of the homicide, and what we're hoping to do going forward, just so you kind of have that same base level understanding. Every year, this is my second summer here in District One, so I dealt with the Swing Park and all of its issues last year. Right around when it starts to get warm, we started thinking about this in April, we had a couple of nice days, and we reminded our early shift that this is a very, very popular hangout. In fact, one of my officers said today that she was looking for something to do with her family, and she googled top 10 free things to do in Milwaukee, Swing Park is there. And it gets a 4.5 star, so it is a very, very popular destination for people who live here as well as visitors to the city. And I think everybody enjoys it during the day, and as everybody has said, once it gets dark, people want it to be quiet, they want to start to go to sleep, they don't want to have those issues. But it's hard to find something that's so popular during the day and then say it's dark. But we know that's an issue, so starting in April, I reminded my early shift and my late shift lieutenants to make sure we have squads starting to check the area, and when we do, to clear out the park. We looked at our calls for service, our CAD data, and basically going back to mid-April till sometime last week, we have been at that park 100 times. Of those, 70 of those times where the police initiated the call, we went out with a traffic stop, we went out with a park-and-walk, we went out and we cleared the park, because again, we know it's an issue. In some instances, we were probably busy or just weren't there. I think there were about 30 times we were called to the park by residents. The majority of those calls were for people in the park after hours or noise nuisance, so not significant crimes. Obviously, we had the homicide, but the bulk of the crimes in the park are really a noise nuisance issue. As a result of the homicide though, and actually just before that, we received a grant from the state in mid-July, and we identified five areas in District One that could benefit from extra foot patrols. One of them happens to be the area where the Swing Park was. It wasn't just the park, it was essentially Brady to Water, Water to Hamilton, and then along Cass, that little triangle area. So we had actually foot patrols in that area starting mid-July. We didn't happen to have them the night of the homicide, I think we were there the night before, because we're spreading out those dollars among five different locations. Since the homicide, essentially to make sure the park is safe and to make people feel safer, we have had additional patrols in that area, and we will continue to do that for the duration of the grant. Also, we've been working with the BID, they have cameras there, and prior to this incident, we didn't have access to that, those cameras. And we're now in the process of actually being allowed, the lieutenant and the desk sergeant at the district to see those cameras. I'm not saying we're monitoring 24/7, because those are on a computer and people are doing other police work, but it's certainly something we're paying attention to at 10 o'clock, 11 o'clock, you know, when we start having the issues. And I'm, and I, maybe I'll let them go into a little more detail if they want, the IT people, but there's going to be some additional analytics next week, which will make our job even easier, that there's new software technology that kind of allows you to receive alerts when there's issues in the park. So we're not always, oh, it did be checked, did be checked, did be checked, kind of thing. We'll receive alerts. So we may be in the park less than we have been, I'm not really sure, because essentially those squads know that drive-by, take a look, and clear the park out if there's people there. If we have the video, we might be able to do a more precise response. Instead of coming there, dropping by 10 o'clock, saying there's nobody there, all of a sudden we realize that 10:15 is the time we need to clear out the park. So I'm hoping that our response will be a little bit more precise than it has been, as opposed to just trying to address a problem that may or may not be there. Okay, we can certainly take questions.
Hi, everybody, how you doing? I'm Officer Klein, I'm your community liaison officer, I think most of you know me. Before I get started, I want you to know how serious we're all taking this in City of Milwaukee. I think you know I've been to a lot of community meetings, this is the first one I've ever had, the mayor, the alderman in my own cap, and him standing behind me. So if I mess this up, I'll be guarding a tree on County Line Road in the middle of winter on foot, so cheer for me, okay? So I just want to take a second to give you a little bit of history of all that space, because I've taken a lot of complaints about, Officer Klein, chop the swings down, let's get rid of that park. Okay, I know that question's going to come up, so I'm going to nip that one in the bud. So the history of that space right there, back in the 90s and before the Swing Park, there used to be a homeless encampment right there. Somebody remember that? A gentleman shaking his head. No, you don't, go ahead. So across the river, where they front breweries to be, and they were going back to the mid-90s, that was actually a high prostitution area. So that space has always had some challenges throughout the years, okay? Since the park got added, obviously the homeless encampments gone away, and we've had to step our patrols up. I lost my thought for a second, so I'm just going to turn it over off the back to you when I...
This thought will come back to answer your question, I'm sure. So I'm sure there's a lot of you that want to talk, I don't know how we should best form this. Is there a second mic? Who's got the second mic? All right, so whoever Ala sees raise their hand first, he'll come to you. There's this lovely lady over here.
I have a question. The media has reported that the shooting was in the Swing Park. Now I've heard it's in, it was in the bridge, so I just want clarification.
So she would like clarification on where the actual shooting took place, whether it was on the Swing Park itself or the used car, Chicago Bridge.
Have the actual incident happened on the bridge? The individuals who shot then ran to the park and collapsed and were... The officers were actually flagged down, again, because we were in the area.
That's good to know, because that's not what was reported.
I'm not sure that was public before right now, frankly.
Not what was reported, which is upsetting.
So I think the most important question, and one of the reasons I'm here specifically, is that I think we need to address the future of the swings, right? Because as has been mentioned several times, they've become an integral part of not only this neighborhood, but other neighborhoods. I live in River West, and River West has taken a lot of ownership over this space. They do a lot of activities as a neighborhood. And obviously, I'm learning now that the city has an interest in keeping the swings there. We use and love the park, and I think everybody here is really concerned about the loss of our creation area, so can we address that first and foremost?
You're saying you want to keep the swing?
Yeah.
Well, I think all of us in our introductory remarks said we want to keep the swing as well. People can disagree, she's stated her piece. Who else wants to chime in?
This might be a bit off the subject, but I constantly hear about people committing fences with guns. Closer? This better? People, people commit a fence with guns, and I constantly hear about the gun charges being plea bargain down, and with all the hard work you're putting into capturing these people, I just wonder how widespread this is. I don't see any judges here today.
Well, I want to begin by applauding our Milwaukee Police Department, literally. You can give them a round of applause. And I want you to know that they do a phenomenal job in taking illegal guns off the streets of the city of Milwaukee. That's the good news. Because if you look at the number of illegal guns that they take off the street, it really on a per capita basis far exceeds most major American cities. Now, the bad news is that means there's also a lot of guns, right? I mean, just, that's the reality. And I could stand up here and talk for hours about how the state has loosened up the gun laws, but that's for us to decide through the next year, whether we want to have the laws continue to be loosened. I personally don't think, and again, that's why I alluded in my initial comments to the fact that when we had four homicides in 24 hours, and every one of them was essentially a shootout, that tells you that there's something insane going on. It's just, it's insane. When it comes to the laws itself, one of the things that we did do, and this is somewhat out of character for me, I am not a supporter of mandatory minimums, but I felt that if someone has a violent felony in their past, and they're caught with a gun, whether they committed crime or not, there has to be some certainty in sense of it. So we supported, and I supported, legislation that would do that. Again, this is for repeat felons who have a gun. So we wanted to make sure that we send this message, which is a strong message that, all right, no matter what happened in your life, if you've committed a felony, and you know you can't have a gun, and then you've got a gun, then that's, it's over, or I'm done talking about it. So that law went into effect in the last year or two, and it had a lot of bipartisan support and advocacy.
I just have a question. We, Brady Street people that have been here for a minute or more, have been concerned about the lack of resources and the decline in the resources, most surely back in December with our D6. Tell me about the grant that is helping to put the patrols where they need to be, cameras or whatever is involved with that, and when does that expire? When do we expect that we're going to lose this resource again?
The grant was a state-of-Wisconsin grant that was given to the department. It is spread out among all seven police districts. As far as expiration, it's going to depend if each and every block is signed up, but it will be sometime mid to late September.
Okay. I'm here to speak in favor of keeping the swing. We've had a long history in the general area of building parks and amenities, and then when one negative incident happens, people want to shut it down. If you want to encourage nefarious behavior, well, let's say 20. If you want to encourage nefarious behavior, create dark corners, create places where people don't want to be, and then you'll see miscreants hang out. I lived near the reservoir when they wanted to shut down the basketball courts because kids were fighting. All you need to do is post the rules and enforce them. We, I lived near Cass Street Playground when my wife and I and another group of people wanted to improve the park, and the first thing people said is, bad people hang out there, it's going to fail. This is an asset to the neighborhood and to the city, as been pointed out. The important thing is to preserve it in a positive way. We need good patrols, we need a lot of people to hang out there, we need to continue to do movie nights, ice cream socials, and things that draw people, draw community in a positive way. I recognize that people live next door that could be negatively impacted by noise, especially at night. We need to enforce the rules and take ownership of this park in a positive way. You don't want to continue to take away amenities, to close things down because of negative incidences. We want to continue to do things to provide a variety of activities for neighbors and own this as a community, and not be going to shut things down.
I just wanted to elaborate on the question that the lady over here asked about as far as the finances and the cameras for the Swing Park. That grant is not associated with those cameras, the cameras are in fact property of the BID, so the BID will continue to invest in that area, add additional cameras and surveillance, so those cameras are not associated with any kind of grant regarding to the city.
I want to, before we go to the next one, I want to, you mentioned the fire station. I would be remiss if I didn't just talk about this for a second, and I think because we have a room full of residents here, I want you all to understand something about our budget, the city budget. And it's something that has only occurred starting three years ago, but for the past three years, the budget for the Milwaukee Police Department exceeds the entire property tax levy for the city of Milwaukee. The budget for the Milwaukee Police Department is larger than the entire property tax levy for the city of Milwaukee. The challenge we have is, for years, this goes back a century, we had a relationship with the state government, where the state and the local governments would share the revenue that comes in. That arrangement has been broken, has been broken for 20 years. And so as we look at, whether it's fire departments or fire stations, the police, when I talk about the fact that our budget exceeds the entire property tax levy, that is not because we've had a dramatic increase in the number of police. In fact, we've been fighting to maintain the level of force that we have had, but that's one of the challenges that we face. And since you brought up finances, I thought, just put that on the table so all of us have an understanding of what we're dealing with here and how we're trying to deal with it. So let's go back to the questions.
So I too, I guess, am not a poker, I'm in favor of the swings. I like the swings, especially during the daytime, I think they're great. And I can tell you firsthand, my apartment literally looks out maybe 100 feet away from the swings and the bridge, so I can tell you firsthand, the people who are there after dark are not coming to swing at midnight, they're coming to do other things. It's a lit up place that's sheltered, if it's raining, they can still hang out there. So I think, I think...
Just keep talking, too.
I think getting rid of swings would not solve anything, frankly. What I do kind of question is the fact that it's a wide open space, trying to close something that's wide open seems kind of illogical to me. And I know at our last meeting, we talked about the idea of a fence around the swings, and I kind of wanted to readdress that, because I think that that genuinely could be a good solution. The fence, it's open for people to access the park during the day, at 10 o'clock it closes, it locks. That way, you don't need patrol all the time, it's a closed space. But it's open during the day. I mean, I think that that is a decent possibility, and I don't know, people may disagree or agree, but I wanted to kind of bring that back up, as something to talk about.
I mean, I've definitely heard that suggestion. First of all, I really appreciate what you said about the swings, because I've said that too, and you obviously are a better witness of this than I am if you live right there. I'm mostly guessing, because I'm not usually there late at night myself, I'm more often there during the day, but my guess is people that are hanging out there at night are... I'm not saying no one's ever using the swings at night, but I doubt it's the swings that's making people go, hey, let's meet under the bridge at night. If we remove the swings, a lot of people would probably still meet there. And then the people that are using it during the day would probably use it less. In terms of a fence, I mean, there's challenges with that, I think logistically, aesthetically, and... Well, let's just do, the aesthetics are what they are, it'd be hard to make an attractive fence. You know, this basement loses its charm. Logistically, it's not as though it's already in a closed space and you just have to lock the door, you'd have to construct, and what the part, you'd have to construct a very large fence, someone would have to close it at 10, open it back up in the morning. That's actually not a trivial expense, if someone were to do that. And then it would, it really changed, I mean, I assume you intend on being a transparent fence, but it would, even a transparent fence, I think, would change the experience a lot. I would also say that, while I do think Swing Park is very unique in the way it's an intersection of streets, sidewalks, and riverwalks, and pedestrian bridges, and it's underneath a road, so I don't think, it's hard to compare it to anywhere else, but it is a city park. There's lots of city parks, there's even more county parks. And that dilemma of how do you close a park is true everywhere. It's true in Sherman Park, it's true in Washington Park, where the other double homicide happened, I mean, we're not going to put a fence around Sherman Park. Well, actually, the sheriff did put a fence around Sherman Park for a few weeks, if people remember, a couple of years ago. So I generally think that trying to put fences around parks sends the wrong message about how public they are, and the goal is to use police presence, use community awareness, you know, of when parks close. We had the same problem in Lake Park with Pokemon. That was the only other park meeting I've been to that was standing room only in the last couple of years, was the Pokemon Lake Park meeting. Very similar dilemma, but, I mean, just in the sense of Lake Park closes too. I think I think Lake Park closed at 9:00, I think. Or is it also 10:00? Whatever Lake Park closed, I should know, but I think it's either 9:00 or 10:00. And, you know, it was, it was an issue, we, Officer Klein was a big part of that, so was the sheriff's office, there were partners in that, and allowing people to use the park during the day but not at night. So it's not easy. But in some ways, a fence makes it harder, or makes, kind of makes the good, throws out the good with the bad, I would say, if you try to fence off a park.
Hi, Karen Decker, I'm Public Works Coordination Manager for the city of Milwaukee, and I recognize you from the last meeting, so I appreciate you coming again, and thank you for everyone coming tonight. It's very encouraging to see so many faces and so many people coming out to talk about parks, it's a little bit exhilarating. One of the things that Alderman Kovak noted about this park that is extremely unique in the city is that it's not just a park, it's a riverwalk, and it's a connection between two neighborhoods. And it's a little bit difficult to draw those lines of where that connection should be between the neighborhoods if we were to put up a fence. And I'm not saying it's completely off the table, we could look at many different options, but allowing that connection and allowing more people to enter into that space that are doing good things, that are coming from their condos on Commerce Street to Casablanca to have dinner and then walking back, and allowing those connections is really what livens up a neighborhood and helps create those safe spaces.
And just to be clear, that, that makes it, we were, one thing, we had a pre-meeting before this meeting yesterday morning with the captain, and it is a dilemma, because it's not exactly clear where does the park end and where does the riverwalk or the bridge start, and you are allowed to use the bridge or the riverwalk 24 hours a day, you're just, you're not allowed to use Swing Park. And it may not be, I don't know if we want to try to put that line exactly, I mean, obviously if people are in the park, using the swings, it's clear that they shouldn't be there after 10:00. If they're just passing through, at least let them pass through. I mean, that's, I don't know if you want to talk about the judgment call your officers have to make about when you enforce, how you do that.
As you know, public sidewalks, public roadways are accessible 24 hours a day, and if you can picture the park, you have to the one side where the swings and the benches are, and then you see the sidewalk which gets you to the riverwalk down or across the bridge. And as we stood there, talking about the hours of operation, if you're standing essentially on the concrete and walking, you could be there at 11:00, 12:00, 1:00, 2:00, 3:00, or 5:00 in the morning enjoying the river and the view. So it does create a unique challenge, you know, as the alderman said clearly, if you're on the sand, on the swings, you would be in the park after hours. Now, if you're outside of the sand and on the swings, other things apply, I mean, you wouldn't technically be in the park after hours, but if you're causing a noise nuisance or a disorder, I mean, those are issues that we can address differently, but not necessarily because of the park knowledge.
Gentlemen, I'm basically, here you are.
Yeah, I was actually wondering if you could all talk to the abandoned parking lot next to the park and the pump house. I know the pump house is sitting in a quick, a quick claim with a lawyer in town, so I'm just curious as to grants that might be available for new business owners.
When you say the pump house, what do you mean?
There's the, there's the... There's the, there's the rat sculpture with the buck and the dragonfly. That is known as the Brady Pump House, and it's sitting with a quick, a quick claim deed with a lawyer in town.
Well, you're standing next to the guy who was maybe going to open a coffee shop there, is that? That is something I've been discussing with the Brady Street bid, the pump house, because it wasn't MMST property. We're in discussions, but it's an odd property, doesn't have windows, it's got more basement than regular floor. I mean, it's a very odd property for someone to reuse that. It'd have to be a real visionary. We're hoping someone does figure that out. But that's, it's being discussed, but I don't know if there's a definite plan. As for the vacant lots just to the south, just downriver of the park, that is owned by developer Wangard, Stuart Wangard owns that. I've talked to him, not as regularly lately because he's had a lot of balls in the air. I called him after this incident to ask him if this incident was going to change his plans. He said absolutely not. He knows that the park is an amenity overall, and that was a tragic incident, but he's, he doesn't think it would stop him from breaking ground. He's not about to break ground. He's got a fully approved project, would be similar to the River House. He's an apartment developer, he's also developed the Avenir. He's got it approved, and it actually has townhomes that face directly to the park. It's an apartment building that didn't need a zoning change, but needed a Board of Zoning Appeal. It's scary. And so he's got approval. The only thing stopping him from building there is his own financing, and that's been the case for a while, but that doesn't necessarily mean it's not going to happen. I mean, like, he's got several projects that he's working on. He did say that he's told his people to clean it up some, and I encouraged him to do that sooner rather than later. And if he doesn't, obviously, we can start taking enforcement actions. But he's going to clean up some of the weeds, maybe move the fence there, make it a little more presentable temporarily. And I think that could be a huge improvement for not making that part, you know, half of it does feel abandoned, right? That half. And I think any improvements he can make in the near term would be helpful. But we do expect, I hope sooner rather than later, that he's going to build a very nice building there.
I was thinking, if history is any teacher here, something will be built there. It's just, it is too hot in the area not to build. Somebody's going to build there.
Well, thanks for coming, everybody. I'm a resident at the River House, and I am for the swing park during the day, I'm not for it at night. I guess I'd like to address the history. We've talked a little bit about fencing. The lighting, I've heard in the past that there, it has been well lit, and it was too bright, so they removed lighting. What I see in the evening, I kind of stay clear of the area, I was even going to go get some pictures, but I don't want to go over there at night. A lot of it too is behind the, where the walkway is from the River House up to the Swing Park. There's no fencing there to prevent someone going underneath the bridge right there and camping out. So that would be an area I think would be fencing. I'm not sure when we visited, if it was at night.
Well, we noticed it, and there's kind of jagged, I don't know how jagged there, but there's big rocks that aren't comfortable to hang out on, they're visual, but they aren't there right in that one area. So that, I think we're talking about whether we could expand the rocks.
Yeah, so I appreciate that question. Certainly, this past year, after we started receiving complaints from the River House and working with some of the residents there and seeing that there were some of those nuisance areas, we had our lighting crews go in and improve the lighting underneath the bridge itself. What we missed was that river walk connection. And primarily, it was missed because it wasn't complete yet at that time. Now that it's complete and we see where the shadows are happening in there, I requested our street lighting team to go in there, make sure that they are looking at the nooks and crannies and where people can hide where those shadows are created, and improve the lighting directly under the Marsupil Bridge where that river walk connection is going in, where that switchback is going down. With that, we certainly noticed that I think some value engineering happened when that connection was made, and the rocks do not extend all the way through to the edge of the bridge. And there's quite a bit of litter up there indicating that people are hanging out there. It's kind of a cozy spot. So we're looking at crossing out and painting for additional rocks to go all the way in there so that it's not as cozy of a spot.
And I'm of that thought too, that nicer you can make it and more welcoming, more well-lit. There's been talk of even having some art along the wall, which I would think would be lit up. The Brady Tower that he was talking about, I know they've put fencing in the nooks and crannies where somebody might have, you know, hung out there. So, I mean, I think that an urban planner or somebody could look at that and all the unique features of that park and come up with some good things. And the other thing was where people pull up in their cars is very dark, extremely dark. So I'm all for the lighting, and I don't live on that side, so I'm not sure, you know, I'm not expert in lighting, but anything will help as far as I'm concerned.
Yeah, I want to, just to add to that lighting, one of the things that we always think about when we're adding lighting, not only is it adding too bright of a spot that it seems welcoming late at night, we want to be cognizant of that issue, but also the residents that are on that side of the building. We don't want big spotlights shining, and we want to cut down on the light pollution into their apartments.
And I will say, I talked to Stu, but I also talked to Richard Aronson, who runs a development team that built and owns the River House, and he volunteered immediately, I didn't even ask him, he said if cost is an issue, he'd be happy to contribute to the lighting. So we're in discussions, I know the bid and DPW's in discussions. There's potentially money from all three sources, from DPW, the city, from the bid and from the River House owners, who are together on the lighting solution. And obviously, if it's too bright and it becomes attractive, or if it's too bright and interferes with the people who are living right there, we'll be, we'll make adjustments.
And I just wanted to touch base on the lighting and also on the pump house as well. So we actually are in the process of getting proposals for additional lighting, some with motion detection options, so it's not as bright all the time. And the rocks, I think, is a fantastic idea to bring it up all the way, so it's not as inviting to stand there. The Brady Street bid is going to add that, underneath that bridge, for additional cleanup because there's quite a bit of garbage there currently. As it relates to the pump house with the creatures on the top, MSD was originally, had plans on demoing that building. I'm not sure if you guys are familiar with the history of the artwork on top of those creatures, but we've been able to acquire the property, preserve the creatures, and we're actually in the process of basically getting them refurbished. And we hope to have the project for a coffee house next year sometime. We're hoping that we can activate that space, and the more people that are going there for the proper purposes, we can regain that space. And I, for one, of course, as president of the bid, am for keeping the swings there. And I would hate to see anything happen to it because of a few bad actors.
Hi, my husband and I live right over in Cassidy Pearson, and I see a lot of our neighbors here. We're really happy that River Center, River House is there. We have a lot of friends who live there. We remember when it was an old abandoned warehouse, there were a lot of homeless people. But the homeowners have a little more invested in this neighborhood, I think, than some of the renters who are newer to the area. Like, the pig is committed to breakfast more than the chicken or whatever. So there are people I know are actually concerned about our home rates going down, and not just because of the homicide, but because of the increased crime over the last two or three years. In particular, there has, friends of mine have been mugged. We, right behind where the pumping station is, have created the Brady Street Community Garden where we've had homeless people. And one day, my husband actually found four kids sleeping in a car in the middle of the day. Even though we have police coming to clear it out at night, it doesn't stay clear. And it's a great place during the day and until 10:00 at night. If the police come at 10:15, clear it out, at 11:00, it's full of music and noise and cars on Water Street. About two and a half years ago with the previous captain, he came and talked to the Brady Street Area Association, decided to do a sting or whatever, if you will. He came down on one Friday, Saturday weekend, two nights in a row, I believe, probably took 20 to 30 people away in cars, in handcuffs, arrested them. The work got to their friends, the bad element or whoever it was, they were able to arrest. And the park was clear for a good rest of the summer. So I don't know if, besides just clearing the park, you can actually arrest people or find a way to make sure they're not back 45 minutes later.
And we have done that. We do advise a lot of it, and what the officers do is they use some discretion. So if they come down to the park and it's individuals who are cooperative, and then they haven't seen there again and again and again, they generally advise them and have them go on their way. We have had instances where people were, multiple people were issued citations regarding it, so we've done both. Essentially, and I understand what you're saying, but this park has become so popular that I don't think a night or two of sweeps, because again, in June, I think there were three nights in a row where we issued tickets. It certainly didn't impact it this year like it did a couple of years ago when it was probably a little less popular on the internet.
Hey, apologies if I, I'm about to say it's progressive and radical, but honestly, it's some, it's principle that if you do a lot of research, you'll see that the, that ancient Mayans and ancient Egyptians and ancient Atlanteans used to know. And it is that you can combat violence with certain aspects of light. And that is, if, if, some of your officers have realized, if you change certain gel cells pink when you have a lot of violent inmates, and you put them in a, in a pink room, psychologically, that gives them the, a vibe of calming down because pink is the color of love, right? And so I thought this, that if you were to install LED lights in certain areas, such as pink lights or orange lights or whatever, to set certain news, and so in particular areas where there's a lot of violence and crime, if you change, you install pink lights for a while, you'll see that, that those feelings of aggression that people have, that when, when in the area of pink lighting will, will not have those feelings of aggression so much. If perhaps if you change, if you encounter too many people running away during traffic stops, and change one of those red lights for a blue light, which is the color of authority that, you know, the ancient mystics were all aware of, then you would see that you'll increase the probability of people yielding to your authority and actually stopping, and you won't have so many people fleeing. So if you use certain colors, pink love, blue for authority, and have different lighting on the streets as opposed to the blind lighting that we have, it might be to encourage people to come out and self-patrol their own communities more, and eventually have all this violence reduce. But if you, and then you should be able to see statistically the evidence of the difference between...
I know we've been discussing the lighting plan, the lighting engineers here actually, but have we talked about different colors? Or, we've definitely talked about LED versus, I mean, we've actually gotten criticized from, in some, by Urban Milwaukee for some of the lighting we used in the park. So, and I do know that bringing the lighting up to LED standards is not just good for the environment, but it's more calling a better light.
Certainly, lighting installations, I think, similar to what you're talking about, are things that we look at in our underbridge areas. Most recently, we've been talking with the Third Ward Association in the downtown bid and creating some different lighting schemes under 794 to better make that connection into those neighborhoods. So that's something that we could bring to the lighting engineers and talk about.
And also, the, underneath the bridge, we're actually not only installing additional lights, but we're going to activate it with additional art. So along the wall underneath the bridge, and also in front of the pump house, we're going to have local artists have sections and be able to do different artwork pieces throughout the entire area. That, of course, will also have additional lighting to light up the artwork. We're going to retake that area. We're going to activate it not only with artwork, but also with additional lighting, and we're going to do whatever it takes.
Hi, my name is Eve LaPierre, and I want to thank everybody for coming and talking about Swing Park. I was hoping we could talk a little bit more in a larger area. I live over on Booth Street, right across the Marsupil Bridge, up the Bluff. There's a lot of amenities in the area that I think, you know, kind of complement Swing Park and attract a lot of people as well. We have the Booth Street stairs, the Marsupil Bridge, we have the river walk, we have the band Sheldon in the park. And along with some of the issues that have been relevant to Swing Park, we've had some of the same issues in our area too. So just, we have a lot of car-to-car joy dealing. The other day, somebody drove a car down our street and decided to set it on fire. So there's things going on there. So kind of my question to some of the people here, the police department, would it be possible to extend the boundaries of Police District 1? So we're including all the amenities that are part of the whole park complex and Swing Park and the river that we have here. Seems like things are a little bit disjointed times in the amount of...
Look, Captain said expanding District 1's boundaries above her. I know that Chief Flynn did change that boundary and changed a lot of the boundaries to follow national bor- not national, natural borders. So I think it made a lot of sense actually to have the river be the boundary. I mean, District 1, 5, there's been a couple of changes. District 5 used to be both sides of the river. And then there was the southern boundary, and District 1 was downtown. And then now District 1 expanded to the north and District 5. So the river is now the boundary of Police District, which makes sense everywhere, probably makes the least sense in this area. And I don't, I mean, how do you coordinate with District, on the other side of Marsupil?
So, and I'll give you that coordination can be challenging at times because we are on different radio channels, but certainly the officers convey back and forth, the old-fashioned radio, cell phones and things like that when there's things going on. And we do dispatch, they do announcements, so that if there's something happening on one side of the river, by the bridge, it goes back and forth. In fact, there was a robbery not too long ago that ended up being on the west side of the river that District 1 did a lot of the investigation on. So we work together. Is it as seamless as I would like? Probably not, but we certainly do work together.
Okay, well, thanks for responding to that. I just know that when we had District 1 going up to North Avenue, they included the park in our neighborhood, I think things worked a little bit better. I just wanted to bring up one other point too. We have a Holton Street right over here, obviously, it's on like the roof of Swing Park. Holton Street sees a lot of speeding once you leave Brady Street. It's kind of like a two-lane race up Holton Street, up over the bridge until you get to Holton Street, then that turns into one lane really quickly. I know we have some folks here who maybe can talk about, can we get the same treatment on Holton Street that we did on North Avenue and Locust Street? Thank you, people. To make it a little bit easier to bicycle over and slow down the traffic. The traffic goes really quickly over there, and I'm on that bridge all the time bicycling. People like to throw their bottles too while they're heading like, you know, a little speed fast. So it'd be great, it'd seem like it could be something that could be done with striping and signage to slow down and get some of the disorder in line. I'll stop talking now and let you guys respond. Thank you.
So I will turn the mic over to Karen to address that, but I did want to say that one of the things Chief Morales has talked about is wanting to reorganize our squad in sector areas, so I will certainly forward your request up. The short answer is yes. We are actively looking at Holton Street and as it connects to Vamhurin as well, and what that street should really look like in the future. I think we've seen that two lanes in each direction is not necessary and is creating an issue with speeding and turning. So our traffic engineers are actively looking at that and looking at Locust Street and North Avenue and the improvements that we've done there with the protected bike lanes as an example of what we can move forward on Holton Street and many other bridges that are essentially overbuilt throughout the city.
Soon, we're having an event to celebrate the Locust Street lanes, the mayor and I will be, is that tomorrow? Tomorrow morning, we'll both be there. So yeah, if your questions don't get answered today, you can find us most again in the morning at the Locust Street Celebration of the Bike Lines. But I think it's been very successful there, as he pointed out, it's very similar in that, frankly, a lot of these bridges were built during the freeway expansion boom, and the engineers overbuilt the bridges with the hope slash expectation that we would soon overbuild all the local roads too. And Locust Street west of Holton, that did happen. They expanded Locust Street west of Holton, and they tried to expand in River West, and people said, people fought City Hall and won, and that's how the Locust Street Fear Run started. So I'm glad they did. I wish they hadn't expanded Locust the way they did, because if you go there, you, on the south side of Locust, west of Holton, you're seeing the sides, not the fronts of houses, because they ripped out the houses that used to be there. And that's not, not a good thing to do. And so the bridges were built for that expansion that never happened, so it doesn't make sense from a traffic point of view to have one lane, then two lanes, then one lane. It actually makes it slower, not faster, and certainly more dangerous. It's faster if traffic gets in a predictable line and moves, allowing for turn lanes. But on bridges, there's no turn lanes, you can't turn off a bridge, so it makes no sense to have extra lanes on bridges. to have extra lanes on bridges if they're extra to where the bridges end up with, so. I, I only represent half of Holton Street by a duck, but although when Coggs and I, mostly Karen and her team are working on it.
Hi, hello?
Hi.
Uh, so, I first want to comment on the violence and overall crime in the city of Milwaukee. I too am in favor of keeping the Swing Park and all the space, the public space used under Marcellville Bridge. So, first of all, on that day, I'm pretty sure there are five shootings in the city, maybe more. Four of them I think were homicides. If you look at the numbers, if you look at the research, and this is citywide research, um, three, three of those, three of those four were escalate incidences. So, people didn't go out to shoot, it wasn't gang violence, it wasn't anything along those lines. It was the fact that a fight escalated. So, that means that it's completely isolated, and this sort of event could have happened in Sherman Park, Washington Park, Cass Street, Nash Park, anywhere around the city. So, I think that's important to note, especially when a turnout as large as this happens. We should be turning out in the Brady Street neighborhood especially, for not only issues of violence and crime in parks, but also for city, sorry, neighborhood-wide issues from retail development to apartment development. I would also like to see this turnout in other neighborhoods, neighboring neighborhoods, because the only way to stop a lot of the stuff, which has been hinted on many times in this meeting, is community organization, right? Art, lighting, encourage ice cream socials, movies, the apartment building next door should have some, some, you know, foot in the door here, they should, they should have some events too. Cass Street School, you could have kids come down to this park and learn how to utilize the park, bring their families. Um, I don't know, I would just like to see this become addressed of a systematic way, rather than an isolated incident. Thank you.
Let me follow up on that, one of the, first of my job that's most difficult is I'm contacted whenever there's a shooting or an act of violence in City of Milwaukee. It used to be that I'd get a phone call, but with technology, it's now just as quick to get this information to me through a text message. So, not surprisingly at all hours of the day, I can get a text message as to what's going on. But I think it's important, in light of the fact that we're here, just to talk about where we are this year, and where we are compared to last year and two years ago when it comes to violence. As of today, we have had 76 homicides in the city of Milwaukee. Last year on this date, we had 77 homicides on this date. Two years ago, in 2016, we had 87 homicides on this date. Non-fatal shootings, as of today, we've had 320 non-fatal shootings, that's down 15% from last year. Last year we had 376 on this date, and two years ago we had 351. Ironically, it was two weeks ago that Chief Morales came to me and said that he was gonna be giving an address about the violence in the city in his first six months in office. And that was tragically and ironically, 15 homicides ago. And so, my point there is, coming into August 1st of this year, we were not only well ahead of where we were two years ago when it came to homicides and shootings, we were well aware of where we were last year for homicides and shootings. We're still well aware of where we are through non-fatal shootings, but the beginning of August has been, has been bad, has been bad. So, again, I think if you look at, if you look at what's happening with speeding, there's still issues there, there's still reckless driving, but you are seeing more apprehensions there as well. Having said all that, I know as a resident of this city, if it happens to you, or it happens in your neighborhood, or it happens to someone you know, these statistics don't need to think, because these are real people, real people's lives. And the violence is still unacceptable, way, way too unacceptable for all of us. But I just want you to know what's going on, so, I think you disagree.
Thank you, Mayor. And I just wanted to touch base a little bit on what was discussed about activating that park. That park belongs to all of us, and as the president of the Brady Street Bid, we would love more community involvement on what you'd like to see there, what kind of events that you'd like to host there, and we're more than happy to assist you guys in any way, shape, or form, whether it's a, a bar mitzvah, birthday party, or a, a drive-in movie event. The more we activate it, the more we take it, take it to, take, take, take it as ours, I think we'll benefit not only the park itself, but for everybody in the community.
We've been going almost an hour, I never would agree to go at least another half, we'll go another half hour for an hour and a half, just to give people a sense of timing. I know there's still a lot of hands up and got the mic.
Hi, so I just wanted to be a counterpoint as a homeowner at the River Beach on the vineyard. So, you know, as a homeowner, I don't really feel that my property value is being negatively affected by the situation. We've seen nothing but homeowners that are selling in our condos getting huge returns over the past few years with this neighborhood and the investments that are being made. I personally just walked through that area at 11 o'clock at night on a Sunday after I had dinner at Ball's At. I stopped at the Swings, and I had a little swing. I didn't feel unsafe, I didn't feel there was anything unsavory going around. I liked the Swings there, I feel that it's a great compliment to our neighborhood. I think that there's a lot of good suggestions that have been made with the artwork and the community involvement and the activities that we can add to just make it more of an event space. So, I really appreciate the involvement and the people that are interested in making it a better space, because I don't think making it nothing is gonna help the neighborhood at all.
I could just add to that sentiment, to Alice's sentiment, there's a reason that special event permits are free of charge in the city of Milwaukee, so my office takes care of special event permits. The elected officials have made it very clear that those special event permits need to remain free. If you need resources for us, we do charge a cost for those resources. The beauty of Swing Park is that you don't need road barricades to block it off. So, if anyone's interested in having a special event there, it's, it's free and open.
Yeah, I mean, we can sign off on events going past 10, the River West 24 does get a 20-hour permit, they're, they've been doing it for 10 years, they'll, unless something really goes wrong, they'll keep getting it. In general though, in some of these movies, they don't, some of them go below 10, they are permitted to go, I think, till 11. But that's something that I know, I know a good chunk of the crowd is from the River Horse Buildings and also from Pierce and the immediate neighbors. On those special permits, if I don't get any complaints, I usually give them out, but if I get even a hint that it's gonna be too loud, or it's somebody who's taken an event out before that I got complaints from, then we would not sign them in the future if someone took out a permit and was cross the community standard lines of how loud they were. So, that, those are judgment calls that I make, in consultation with nearby neighbors on how late and how loud to let those events go. But yeah, they are free.
Is this on? Thank you for hosting this meeting. I also live here, I've been a renter and a homeowner, and I don't want to draw any distinction between the importance of being a renter or homeowner. Everybody who lives in this neighborhood who has chosen to live here loves it, and there's a reason why they're staying, some people just can't buy a house yet. So, I don't like to draw that distinction, although I'd like to say that I've been invested in this neighborhood for a long time, and that over the past 12 years using that bridge, it's become safer, it feels better to be on it. I don't believe that building a gate would help, because there's still space beyond it, and I'd like to offer my support and encouragement for making the park more, all parks, all public spaces more inclusive and welcoming, helping people feel a sense of ownership and love the idea of all the art that you've mentioned. Something I was going to ask about till you brought it up, but I'd also like to push it further into understanding or figuring out ways to help people developing the land, like the owner of the lot next door, to have them held more accountable for investing in those kinds of projects until they're able to build. They're holding onto that land, and, and they should be doing something with it to benefit the community even while they're waiting to build the new land. So, in conclusion, there's a lot happening in that park over the past 10 or more years with the bike and movie, the bike races, ice cream socials, more of that, and anybody who lives here, anybody who's concerned with the safety of the park, I think engaging in it in whatever way it means something to you is what will keep it safer, not building a wall.
There's a hand behind you a little ways, and a couple of the hands are there, and I know there's hands over here too, I think.
I would like to understand how the decision is made for how late parks stay open, and in particular that part. I'm not suggesting that this is a, a, a solution that solves all of the problems, but would it make sense for the park to close at sundown?
It is a city ordinance, I'm pretty sure if we wanted to change it, we could. 10 o'clock is what it is for most of the parks, it's kind of a compromise between, I mean, you know, it's a compromise, because most people don't go to bed right at sundown, people are out enjoying, you know, people do like to enjoy parks at twilight. Most people are in bed by 10, obviously not everybody, but that tends to be, like patios often, we make our patios often stop at 10. I don't know, it's, it's, it's not a magic number, something we could discuss. But I, I, I think there might be opinions on both sides of whether we make it later or, or earlier in this room, I don't know. There was another hand over there.
I appreciate the things that people are saying about what can we do to better the park, and I'm just gonna second or third, the things about that property. I feel like you guys had sort of a soft answer as a regard, as it relates to Wayne Guard, I think as a property owner. I thought that there was some kind of ordinance that, I guess, protects a neighborhood against unsightly properties, for lack of a better term, that, isn't there some, I mean, it's a...
No, I, I thought I did mention that we could do an enforcement action there, based, I mean, it's generally complaint-driven, he, he's volunteer, he's gonna take care of it, if he doesn't, we can start writing them up.
Yeah, I guess that's what I mean, like when you say we can, like, I kind of, I would feel better if you said we're going to. And, 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 I mean, because as other people are saying, like, a crummy area attracts or creates a perception that bad behavior can take place. And that's the worst, it's a mess, but quite honestly, the Swing Park's a little bit of a mess too. I mean, there's a lot of garbage, there's often overflowing dumpsters. For me, I'm a walker, every time I walk by there, it's sort of a hazard, because the sand is on the sidewalk and makes it slippery. So, all those things can be remedied, I just would really like to hear some solid commitment that it's gonna be cleaned up, the garbage that's in the embankment and in the sand and overflowing, all that's gonna be cleaned up, Wayne Guard's gonna be held accountable to make that an appealing area, just so it doesn't look like a desolate dump.
I can guarantee you that he will get the word if this property has been discussed tonight, I guarantee that, that he will get it, and I think he's a smart enough businessman, and he's responsible enough, that I, I believe that he will respond.
Yeah, well, I mean, he, he... He volunteered it to me, I called him and wanted to take his temperature on his development plans, and he said, I have already told my staff to do this, now that was three days ago and it's not done yet, but I'm assuming they're making arrangements, but if they're not, we'll make sure that they do.
And I'll, I'll be quick, I've been using Swing Park with MPS sites with my bike program, and half the times I'm coming from a part of the city where they have never even known it existed, and it is a life changer. I don't know the proximity, and I don't want to put you on the spot, but part of being community is cleaning up and not putting the responsibility on those around you, so if you want to be part of the community, you don't always need to complain about it, maybe you come apart.
Well, one thing I will say, on the issue of the sand, the sand is a city, and before, I don't know if you remember, we had the rubber tire pellets, and those got dragged everywhere too, so we switched to the sand. It is a challenge how to, I don't know, I don't think the sand is perfect, but it's maybe better than the other options we had on the table. If there's something better than sand that would track less, but we, we do, EPW, I see him, I go by this park, you know, a couple of times a day, we do have crews out there pretty regularly, even when I'm not nagging him to do it. And, and the litter cleanup, we did discuss, that the bid, and I really do want to thank the bid, the bid boundaries do not extend beyond, beyond, to, to this park actually, but they're, but the bid is sort of thinking, I don't know if they want to conquer the whole city, but they're thinking in a far-sighted way about, hey, we'd like the areas around Brady Street to have a nice connection to Brady Street. So, the bid, even before any of this happened, their ownership with the lighting and the litter and the maintenance of the park, and what they're trying to do now with the pump house, which better connect Brady Street to the park, is something that I, I think we, I'm glad we have a bid willing to do that, and litter is part of their mandate, and they're gonna expand their mandate.
I'll say that's exactly what we're, we're doing. So, we are, as far as underneath the bridge, that was something that was missed from the cleanup crews, that's something that's gonna continue to be monitored and cleaned up. But we are actually gonna be meeting with Wayne Guard and the, the River House to discuss how we can work together as a community to be able to not only invest in safety and security, but lighting, and we're actually also wanting to put another, another four cameras on the Marcellville Bridge, one on the opposite side by the Laker Brewery, also one underneath the bridge, and an additional two on the bridge itself. So, we were basically wanting to get that entire area, the park, the bridge, all, you know, monitored with real-time monitoring from First District, Fifth District, and of course, reported DDR. So, we're gonna continue doing whatever we can to make sure that you guys feel safe and secure.
Hi, I just want to say that I'm glad to see so many people out here about the park and caring about the park. It's too, it's sad that I had to come out of such a tragic place, which can build such fear and break, that tends to bring hard people out about things. I do think that, like this gentleman over here said, that it is a symptom of the epidemic that's going on in Milwaukee and across the country of violence and gun violence, and like, landing it on the park is missing a huge opportunity to actually like, look things in the eye and deal with things. In that sense, that of course there's gonna be people there hanging out after hours, there's no place in this city for kids under the age of 21 to hang out at night. And I would like to see, which would take more work than a fence or some rocks, some outreach going on to the people that aren't hanging out there, figuring out what we can do as a city and a community to create spaces that people can be in past 10 p.m. I think that park would be safer if more people felt like they could be there past 10 p.m. And I understand the noise, I understand those bedrooms right there now, but they're, those are new, and the community has been here a lot longer.
Guys, hands over there, are there a lot of hands over here too, we've left with this side of the room, I'll make sure, okay, we'll get over there and we'll come back.
Well, I've lived there for 60 years, so I don't remember the hookers, and I don't remember what else you said was there.
Homeless academies.
Homeless academies. I remember that they did put in a halfway house, they never told us we had problems with that at that time, but I don't remember the hookers. I remember playing underneath the bridge and going down to the riverfront and never feeling unsafe. Now, in the past three years, we've had a shooting on the corner, we've had a shooting down there where two people actually died, and that's more than what we ever want. Whether it's one or 20, it doesn't matter, okay? And now, a week ago, I heard four gunshots, and I saw two, I walked down there and saw the squads, they're searching for bullets. So, I don't know, I know what goes on on a daily basis, and I know when you guys are there and when you're not, because we do drive by if the police is there or not. So, there are many nights that you guys aren't there, and that was around 11 o'clock when we heard the gunshots.
The day of the murders, what time is the cops scheduled? Because there was 20 people hanging out at quarter of 11. Everybody was running around, they said, the paper said it was 20 people running from the gunshot.
She had said that the cops were flagged down, and I don't know the exact time.
Nobody, nobody showed up at 10 o'clock like they were supposed to.
Oh, no, she mentioned that, that that was actually, they had done that the night before, but not that night.
Somebody would've got there at 10 o'clock, I mean, it wouldn't have been to a murder.
That's true.
And it's great that you guys like to visit the area, but we also have Gadish Park, we have Reservoir, we have the playground, there are many spaces to bring your families to. That wasn't a park, it's sand and six swings, and that's a little bit pushing it. If you need a place to meet, there are a lot of wonderful places around the city you can do that. We don't need another park, or so what you... do that. We don't need another park, or so what you call a park. Six swings under a bridge with some sand, please.
Final question I just had that I don't think has been addressed, Liz, about the traffic, even before, way before the shooting happened, the murders happened. We had complained quite a bit about the crosswalks on Water Street near River House. There's several crosswalks that go back and forth to Demodas, and tons of people use those at night. And it's even during the day now. It's getting, it's such a high-density area now with, obviously, the River House, and then they're building the new comedy or the new arcade. And I think people view that portion of Water Street as a shortcut from going down Brady. So they fly down that road, and it's getting more and more dangerous. I'm not sure there's any statistics on it.
Well, I know we were, River House had requested a little bit extra of no parking near some driveways to increase visibility, which I think we've done.
No, no, that hasn't been done. Nothing has been done in a year and a half.
So we did get the request for increasing between the driveways, and we're still negotiating that with the Alderman's Office. With that development of the site, Wayne Guard, we are pushing them to realign that intersection where Water Street hits Brady Street and curves down into downtown, because it is an issue with that intersection. When we did the paving project, the high-impact project on Water Street, just last year, it was 2016, we made some improvements that have made a big deal to that left turn lane going on to Water Street, so that it's quite a bit safer than it is now. And we have noticed with the stop signs at Swing Park, people really are listening to the pedestrians and the need to yield to pedestrians and stuff for pedestrians at that. So we're seeing a huge improvement. We know that there are still issues, and it's going to be, continue to be a learning curve. But with that Wayne Guard development moving through, that intersection won't be realigned. It'll be less of an opportunity to cut through and then quickly make that right turn on Water Street.
And would that be something that Wayne would consider? Speed bumps in that area, just where it's highly congested at the three corners, kind of where they meet?
We could consider it. I do know, we have looked at the stats. I know from personal experience, because I bike and drive that road often. It feels unsafe. The fact that it feels unsafe actually makes it safer, because people really do slow down because they feel, you see, it's generally parked off. Like, that road didn't have parked cars on it all the time, people would cut the corner. But the fact that it's parked up so much, it's a narrow road with a curve that's not the smoothest curve. People do, they seem like they're driving fast, but they actually go slower there than on most streets already. But, and I think it might be a main street, I don't know if it's eligible for speed bumps, but we certainly can make adjustments to crosswalks, driveway approaches, and we're doing that now. It has been an ongoing issue, people using that road as a shortcut, for sure.
Did you ever address what I said, though?
You expressed an opinion that you don't like the park. I don't agree with you. I didn't want to be rude and say that.
No, no, no. You have to acknowledge the reasons.
Okay, I acknowledge that you don't like the park.
Now, respond to the four gunshots I heard. And was that actual?
Yeah, well, that was the night of the homicide, I believe.
No, that wasn't that night. That was a different night.
There wasn't enough, I don't have the exact data. Actually, do it in my notes if I look.
Don't pretend it never happened?
I'm trying to finish. I'm trying to finish.
It didn't come up until I brought it up.
There was a call for shots fired over the weekend from an anonymous caller, and we were given multiple addresses from two different callers. There was a call 700 block on Brady, and there was one associated with the Swing Park. Officers were out, and they could find no evidence of shots fired at either location. Now, that doesn't mean it didn't happen, or it could be fireworks, but I can tell you, we found no physical evidence to say it happened at either. You could be correct, ma'am. I wasn't there. I can tell you, officers looked at both locations and could find no evidence at either location.
All right, we have another question over here. Do you want to further follow up, Officer Klein? If you can give the more detail.
Thank you. I'll be really brief with my comments, but I moved to Milwaukee about two years ago, and one of the first things that I learned about was the deep and insidious roots of segregation in the city. And I moved to this neighborhood about a year ago, and I noticed that there were lots of African-American families and teenagers feeling like they could use the space, which I think is great. And I just want to make sure that whatever measures are used to make residents here feel safe after this homicide doesn't push out those individuals from that space.
Brady Street has always been and always will be an eclectic melting pot, and the East Side welcomes everyone, all backgrounds. And we would definitely not want to feel, make anybody feel like they're not welcome in any specific areas. But thank you for that. I think we have time for a few more questions.
10 minutes until 8. I said we go to 8. Just, just hands over here.
Thank you. We live just south of the neighborhood, near Juno and Jackson. And in our neighborhood, there's been a number of shootings also. There was one in Victor's about half a year ago, and there was one down on Water and Juno in front of a bar there. Now, what we see in our neighborhood, because there's so many groups of bars, is, you know, we're kind of like in, living in Cancun at spring break. And what the city does do is they close off Juno over the bridge to provide access for the people who are using Third Street and for the people who are using Water Street. There's a massive police presence every weekend. We can't drive down Juno. So my question is, where are the police are putting their resources? You're obviously protecting that bar area, but you're not protecting these areas up here. So I'm asking about the use of police presence. Can you speak to that?
Absolutely. As I mentioned, we started to deploy officers on a grant in June 20, well before the shooting, because we identified five areas that could use additional police presence, and none of them were specifically in the downtown area.
And I think you are scaling back some of the Water Street.
We certainly have. We scaled it back dramatically over the last several years.
I think we probably were way overdue a few years ago in terms of the bar scene presence. Who else is over there?
Hi. I've been living down here. I grew up down here back to the early 60s, and I've seen the change. It's been really overwhelming, seeing good, seeing bad. But my question is this. We're all here for this Swing Park tonight. Who wants it? Who doesn't want it? I'm not gonna lie, I like to see it gone. Where was everyone, and why did we get to express what happened to our fire department? You took our fire department away, but everybody's fighting for them. Swing.
We had, I don't remember how many meetings we had. I issued a couple press releases about that. We had meetings with the Brady Street Area Association. We had a meeting, pretty well-intended meeting about that. As the mayor described it, it was nobody wanted to close that station, not me. I issued a press release when it first came out, saying this might not be a wise move. But once his budget team showed us the numbers and showed us what the options were, I mean, given the dwindling aid from the state that we're receiving, it would be irresponsible for us. We have to borrow money to maintain service levels. And borrowing money to maintain service levels is a recipe for a spiral, you know, an existential death spiral as a corporation, or a municipal corporation. We go bankrupt. So, I mean, that's a whole other conversation. But yes, we had meetings. Frankly, they weren't quite as well-attended as this, but I would say that in terms of ongoing passion and outreach to me and amongst each other, I think that firehouse created, at least, if I had my ear on the ground, that firehouse created a lot more discussion on Brady and continues to create discussion on the loss of that firehouse, the effect of it. And we'll see, I mean, you know, we'll see. But I certainly don't think that was an issue that was unaddressed either by me or the mayor, or unaddressed by the community. It was definitely...
I just noticed when they closed, that, I mean, they were a big help.
Yes.
Is that working? There we go. I'm going to preface this that I hate public speaking, so this is terrifying for me. I also want to mention the two men that were murdered. Their names were Cameron Ely and Will Davis Jr. We kept calling them very ungluedly, so I just want to make sure everybody knew their names. I'm for keeping public spaces, parks. I did quite a bit of research. The mayor mentioned earlier that a lot of these, at least the August incidents, I could find fatal and non-fatal shootings. By my math, about 50% of those involved arguments. So that, and I know the Milwaukee Homicide Commission 2015 found about a quarter of shootings are from arguments. So this kind of shows that there's definitely an area we could focus on, why people feel like they need to escalate arguments with weapons. Another thing I want to highlight is I got a lot of these details from a website that Milwaukee, the state of Milwaukee actually has, Blueprint for Peace, which highlights how violence can affect anyone's life, whether it's used, the violence in your schools, through relationships, and how homicides can reflect. 6% of fatal shootings happen in neighborhoods with bars. So I think we need to, it's very important that we focus on this park, but Washington Park also had four, five shootings, or in the day at a church picnic. And I heard little blips about that, but I didn't see the reaction that this one had. We need to stop acting like this neighborhood exists in a bubble. Things that occur in other places in the city that may start out in early childhood, snowball. So, yes, it's very important that we keep places like Swing Park. But there's definitely more machinations at work here, and we all are a part of it, and we could all be better. Thank you.
The Blueprint for Peace is, I think it's on, it's a city blueprint produced by our office, the Violence Prevention, which works out of the Health Department and out of the mayor's office, something we as a council have always supported. It's an initiative we started several years ago, along with the mayor, was trauma-informed care, where there's county-trained trauma specialists, social workers embedded in a couple of police district stations. We're hoping to expand that citywide. The police have a new protocol now, when there are child victims of violent crime, their families are offered services to try, because it's not just victims of crime, it's also witnesses to violent crimes. It makes you statistically more likely to commit violence in the future. So we're trying to intervene in that cycle. Obviously, the police will always be a part of public safety in Milwaukee, but that holistic approach, that public health approach, viewing gun violence as a public health epidemic, is something we're trying to get more serious about. A lot of private institutions like EWM and Marquette, they've gotten press about that. I think the ball is rolling towards a more holistic view of dealing with the whole person and all causes of violence. Certainly, so many, if you study, and our homicide review commission looks at what causes these homicides, so much of it is caused by these silly fights over nothing. You know, you assume, if you're gonna make a drastic, life-ending decision for one person, and life-changing decision for you to pull the trigger, you think it would be over something serious, right? It actually usually isn't. That's what's sort of shocking. It tends to be an in-the-moment reaction, an emotional reaction. But we all get emotional. We all do stupid things when we're emotional. But if you don't have a gun in your pocket when that happens, you're not gonna kill someone. So it's the presence of guns, and I know the mayor will mention it openly, probably at a meeting like this, where we're trying to be constructive and local. We don't want to spend too much time bashing our political opponents or our superiors. But frankly, the state government has drastically changed the law and prevented us from enforcing or even studying the epidemic of gun violence. And I see that Cameron Hillary, the second, is here. He's the newly-elected Democratic nominee. Is there a Republican on the ballot even?
Nope.
So he'll be the only guy on the ballot in November, so he doesn't need a shot clock to get elected. But congratulations, he's one of the youngest people I've elected to the state legislature, former president of the youth council. And he's here. So I know he'll be working to change, hopefully with a totally different legislature in January. He'll be working to change some of those laws so that the police in Milwaukee can actually do their jobs and stop these guns. They're doing everything they can within the law, but the state law is so constricting right now, they're not able to do their job to the best.
Close it out, yeah. My name is Ruthie. I actually live right across the street from Swing Park, and then we're building and heavily investing in the neighborhood down on Astor next to the Lariosos. But I'd actually love to push you further on actually creating more spaces like this on the East Side and the city. I think for communities that, especially folks like me and younger folks who are going to be investing long-term in the city, this is the kind of thing that we'd like to see. Now, obviously, there are some enforcement things that need to happen. Police presence is not something that I'm actually pushing for. I think when communities of color come in contact with police, it doesn't always end well. So I would love to see other organizations be involved in this. There's lots of agencies and organizations in the city that I would, I would think would love to take that challenge on. So I'd like to push you to get those folks engaged as well. But I love Brady Street because there are spaces like this, and I'll continue to invest in the neighborhood both personally and financially, and I'll vote to make that happen, so.
Thanks for coming. Thanks to America for coming, and thanks to Allon for hosting this.